Good morning. I'd like to call to order County Council's agenda meeting for Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Please rise. We'll pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And last folks to go on mute if they're not actually intending to speak here. The, as in past meetings, we call for public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting. During our agenda meetings, we only take public comments at the end of the meeting, and then tomorrow we'll take public comments both at the beginning of the meeting for any item on the agenda and then at the end of the meeting for anything that somebody wishes to share within reason. We will accept public comment by email at publiccomment@co.delaware.pas and by telephone at 610-891-4931. Please give your name and address so that we can read it into the record and your comment will be read into the record. First item calls for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 6, 2021. Any questions or comments from council on that agenda item? All right, hearing none, we're going to move on to the next agenda item, which calls for a COVID vaccination update. And I believe we have Ms. Halt and Ms. Devlin here to, one or both of them to, to present to us. Though I'm not seeing any of them on the screen.
Mr. Chair, they, they will be present tomorrow evening. Dr. O will be there as well. They have a lot of, I think, promising things to discuss about expansion of our ability to provide vaccines. As council has directed that, we're not going to let our throughput be the constraining factor. So they are both engaged right now in the startup of the point of distribution at the Aston Community Center. And I think they'll also be able to give an update tomorrow on the status of the Delaware County Wellness Center in Yavon. So those are the points that will be addressed tomorrow evening.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? All right, here now, we'll move on to agenda item number six, which calls for the first reading of ordinance 2021-1, amending section 6-20G1 of the Administrative Code Regarding Residency of County Employees. Mr. Martin, I would understand that we would do a first reading tomorrow night, and then there would be a second reading presumably two weeks after that. And typically, we call for a reading of the title of the ordinance and then a short description of that. Is that how you think we should proceed this morning?
That is how we will proceed tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, and we will cover as much or as little of it right now as you'd recommend.
Okay, maybe just a brief overview of the whole thing. I don't know if we need to give the formalities, but just the intention of what the ordinance is meant to cover beyond a little bit, other than just regarding residency of county employees.
The intent is to amend the county code to address the question of residency requirements of employees and to make sure that the code, as amended, has appropriate flexibility to address sort of the realities of the current circumstance. And there are essentially two areas. One is dealing with individual employees, and it memorializes that an individual employee who, when hired, is not a resident of the county, is required to establish residency within three months of the start date of employment, and provides a degree of flexibility to address a circumstance where an employee is utilizing good faith to establish residency, but there is a delay beyond that three months, would provide for an opportunity to further extend in three-month increments with the recommendation of the director of personnel, the approval of the executive director, up to a maximum of 12 months. And then, in certain extraordinary circumstances, allows for a further extension upon approval of county council to a maximum of 24 months. So that's the framework of the proposed provision as it deals with individual employees. And then it also provides to allow council the authority to exempt certain categories or classifications of personnel from the residency requirement if there is a finding by council that, that there is a need to, to do so because of sort of a systemic issue for a particular category of employees. That exemption expires after 24 months unless there is a further extension provided for by council. So again, there's, there's two components. There's a component as it relates to individual circum, individual employees exercising good faith to relocate but are delayed for reasons having to do with their personal situation. And then the second has to do with classes of employees who, because of the peculiarities of the particular employment circumstance, the magnitude required is causing a problem with finding enough county residents to fill those jobs. So that's the summary.
Mr. Martin, I have a question because it, well, a comment and a question, I guess. And this is a comment I'll make tomorrow night, too, which is, to a large degree, we are, certainly with respect to the six months and the category of employee exemptions, we are codifying what has been the practice of council for many, many years. Correct?
Yes, it, practice of the county. It seems as if there's been a tradition in the county to allow for individuals to take six months to relocate to the county. But while that may have been the tradition, it's not provided for under the code. So we're trying to, as we should, align the code with the, with the historic practice in the county, with the slight adjustment of it being three months with the opportunities to extend.
Okay. And then the, you know, I know that we have, prior to us coming in, Fair Acres employees and social service employees, you know, the civil service employees and in human services were not, were exempt from the residency requirement. We, this council created a sort of ad hoc exemption for the juvenile probation or the juvenile detention center staff. And, you know, I tend to think that we are going to have probably challenges if we migrate a workforce currently employed by GEO to the county with the prison, that that will also be potentially an area where, to keep, you know, experienced officers and, you know, corrections officers in place, we may need the exemption. So I guess I just want to, again, kind of reiterate that this has been, with respect to Fair Acres and, you know, the human services employees has been, that are on civil service, has been a longstanding exemption to this, to what the code currently provides.
May I ask, is the underlying requirement that we have, that employees be residents of Delaware County, just from the Administrative Code? Or is it in, I don't see it in the charter, but is it in our charter?
No, it's, it's only in the Administrative Code. And to build on something that Ms. Ruthur just said, as to the county's civil service employees, any residency requirement in the code is overridden by state, the state's civil service statute, absent a specific request from the county to override that, which I'm not aware has ever occurred. So the folks who are civil service at Health and Human Services, that is consistent with, with both practice and longstanding law. Other ad hoc exceptions are better off being codified as we are beginning to take the steps to do through this ordinance amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I just want to make sure I understand the parameters here. We're not bound by our charter to keep this residency required to begin with. Instead, we're just codifying what practice has been and clarifying what prior code has held. And since we're at this juncture, I just want to inject a little self-reflection here about the wisdom of this requirement altogether. And I'm not taking a position either way. In a prior government in which I was involved, we had the same introspection, and it was in our charter at that point. And I note that many of our sister counties do not have this requirement. And I, you know, I'm glad that we have this introduced today. We'll have some time to think about it. We'll have some time to hear from our constituents about their thoughts on the pros and cons of this requirement. But I, I do want to just take a little time and think about the underlying wisdom of this policy.
I appreciate that. And one, the one comment I have sort of on the ordinance that I would welcome your thoughts on tomorrow night, Mr. Martin, is my understanding is, so we've sort of set aside for a moment, the, I mean, the, the civil service employees, and I understand your point, and thank you for clarifying that. Fair Acres doesn't, to my knowledge, fall under that. They're not civil service employees. There's, you know, I've been signing PFA's since I got here, and there are employees who work outside, who live outside the county who are working there. I don't know when that exemption was authorized. So would it then become before, I'm assuming it was more than two years ago, unless Mr. Zidic and Mr. Madden remember it being authorized during their time on council. So I'm assuming that we would have to revisit it, revisit Fair Acres as soon as we adopt this ordinance.
Yes, I think that if this ordinance were to be adopted promptly thereafter, council should consider and confirm the classes and categories of employees to which it wants to exempt the requirement.
Thank you.
I guess from my perspective, I understand the pros and cons of the employment requirement. You know, in some ways, it narrows the field from which we can choose employees or otherwise constrains our ability to attract employees. On the other hand, there is something to be said for the fact that we would like county taxpayer dollars to stay within the county, and perhaps also that we would want those who are either formulating or carrying out county policy to feel those policies, to be part of the communities that they are affecting with their, with their policy decisions or their actions. So I can see both sides to it. I think there, there may come, there may be certain areas where the costs and benefits differ. So for instance, if you're, if you're struggling to, to find a pool of candidates to do a certain job because of this, and because of this constraint, and therefore the services being provided are materially impacted, you may want to make exceptions for that, and I get that. But for other positions that may more easily be filled, one might want to keep this, this policy in force. And when I say this, I'm thinking particularly of the jail, of the prison. And I know that the ability of George Hill and the ability of other similar prisons to actually find employees to work there is a difficult one. And, you know, when we take over running the prison, this is going to be an issue that we face. So, you know, maybe, I think that's consistent with everything that's being said here. Maybe it's not a one-size-fits-all. Maybe it is a general policy, but where an exception needs to be made, we make such an exception. Any other comments or questions on agenda item number six?
I'd only add, just because the prison has been brought up as an example, I'm not sure I would make that assumption. That's certainly been the case historically under GEO's management, but with conversations with some folks out there, you know, under a new paradigm of county oversight, and with some other changes to how they're treated and compensated, we may not have the same issues that GEO has historically had. So I, I wouldn't want that to be, and besides, I think we're talking about here, there being a structure for having exceptions for, for up to two years. So, you know, it shouldn't be an issue.
Any other questions or comments on agenda item number six? All right, moving along to agenda item number seven, then. This calls for the approval to renew service and support agreements with MTS Software Solutions at a cost of $136,626.21. And I believe we have Mr. Bilata here to present this agenda.
Yeah, good morning. This includes software support on our licenses and hardware support on all the scanners. The cost is included in the information technology budget. The scanners and software support the Office of Juvenile Support, Sheriff's Department, Department of Police, Recorder of Deeds, and Domestic Relations.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bilata.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number eight. This calls for the approval to enter into an agreement between the County of Delaware and Price Stevenson Acoustic Research for a three-year term at a cost of $34,500 per year. This would handle the sound and lighting detail for the Delaware County Summer Concert Series. And we have Mr. Manfree here to present this, a rather darkened Mr. Manfree. Good morning, sir.
I'm sorry. That's my, I'm losing it here. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Mr. Chairman, the Delaware County Summer Festival has grown over the years in population. It kind of evolved into a regional concert venue. And, you know, the history of the, the summer festival, we used to have youngsters, local students, whether it be college or high school, older high school youngsters, who kind of ran our technical aspects of the concert series. With the ever-growing popularity, the type of entertainers we've brought in, the, the population of our audience, we saw a need a few years ago to bring a professional sound and lighting company in to assist us, with the caveat that we could still continue our apprenticeship with the youngsters throughout Delaware County that have an interest in theater, sound and lighting, stagehand work and such. Price Stevenson's been with us for a few years, and his price, his cost has never, never changed. They've been at 34.5 for the last few years. So I'm asking council's consideration on this agenda item. Thank you.
Can, can you just clarify, is that Price tied to a certain number of events?
He's, he's, yes, we have close to 50 events each year. Yes, he's, and the, the series runs from Wednesday to Sunday. Traditionally, they start late, late April. Obviously, we're hanging on a thread and, like everyone else, we don't know what this year is going to bring. But they're here from 2:00 in the afternoon to close to 10:30 in the evening during, during, during the events. So it's usually late April, mid-May till Labor Day when they shut, when we shut down.
And does this contract that we'd be entering into have any, how does it treat cancellations?
Well, they're a big part of cancellations. If it's, if it's a rain event, you know, this organization coordinates with our marketing and coordinator, communication manager, Beth Chapman, and they work with each event, if indeed we do have a rain out.
And, I mean, I'm talking more, I hate to say it out loud, but COVID cancellations, would we get a credit or?
I would have to, last year, we didn't pull the plug in Ms. Shafer until late, the middle of July. They did a lot of maintenance on this during, you know, at the amphitheater location, upgrade of lighting, sound, maintenance, painting, restroom facilities, you know, a lot of needed, you know, maintenance around the amphitheater gardening issues. And, you know, we just didn't know what, what was ahead of us. But I guess if we don't have it this year, you know, I guess it's a null and void type, type of thing. We're in the process of now of what to do, you know? Do we push it back? So, you know, the, the schedule, usually it runs mid-June to, you know, August 15th, 16th. Breakdown of the equipment lasts from that date to Labor Day.
I'm sorry, Mr. Manfree, are you suggesting these guys also do the landscaping and the painting and the maintenance?
Well, they, last year on occasion, they, they worked, they worked and helped out our maintenance staff with, with some of the details around the amphitheater. Yes, that's not, that's not their, you know, forte, but, you know, they did some upgrades of, of, you know, lighting and sound and maintenance on the soundboard, maintenance at the, at the sound tech booth. So, you know, they, you know, around the amphitheater, they helped out, yes.
Oh, I think the point's well taken. Then maybe, maybe this is an issue for Mr. Martin to sort of think about drafting. The contract to have some provision in there such that for, in certain circumstances, a credit would be given. In other circumstances where they've had to do the work and simply it rains a half an hour before the thing's supposed to begin, and we have to cancel it, well, that, you know, we don't get a credit for that. I'm not, I'll leave it to others to draft it. But that would seem to be something that maybe we could talk about tomorrow night, see if we could think about a way to deal with that.
Okay, I'll talk to Mr. Manfree this afternoon, and we'll see if we can come to a, a quick understanding with the party regarding the issue that's been raised.
Thank you.
And let's hope it's completely moot and that this series goes on uninhibited by the pandemic.
I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Manfree? All right. Good morning, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moving on to agenda item number nine. This calls for the approval to purchase IT equipment from Dell and Amazon off of CoStarz for children and youth services. And we have Ms. Garrison here to present this. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a request for, through our Information and Technology Grants to the Office of Attorney Youth and Families. It is approximately 34% funded with county monies. The balance is funded with state and federal dollars. We have historically, since we've received this grant, been requesting to purchase approximately one-fourth of the attorney-youth staff laptops every year to make sure they have up-to-date equipment. And as I believe I mentioned before, prior council sessions, this has allowed us to go remote when the COVID pandemic hit, not only for the attorney-youth office, but also for equipment that had been outdated per se, and the fact it was over four years old. We were able to use that equipment for other human services staff to make sure we could fairly seamlessly go to a remote workforce. So I would ask for approval to make this purchase. We did all those through CoStarz. My IT staff did obtain three bids for all of the equipment, and Dell was the lowest bid.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Any questions for Ms. Garrison? So if I'm, if I'm doing the math, 16% from federal, 50% from state, so that leaves 34%.
34% for county, yes.
All right. I was just trying to show off there.
Hi, Chair, I apologize, council members. I'm joining this meeting a little bit later, but I am representing Rosemary Halt and, and myself as the Delaware County Health Department. So when I can jump in, let me know.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Garrison on agenda item number nine?
I guess I'm a little, I'm not totally following it. So this equipment that we're buying, this is a one-time purchase? When you, I guess I got lost saying about last year, you know, in previous meetings, discussion of purchasing equipment and how it allowed us to go offline, or I should say, you know, remote during COVID. How does that tie in?
How it ties in is, attorney-youth has been very good with getting every year requesting a one-time purchase of approximately 25% of staff, laptops for 25% of staff. So because we were able to do that, and they have done that for years, they, all of their staff had laptops, so attorney-youth was fine, could seamlessly go remote. The other benefit of, of it was, as laptops were replaced, we would keep them in the event something broke, so we'd have spare equipment. That spare equipment, although it wasn't being used, since it wasn't being used by attorney-youth staff, was able to be given to other departments in human services until equipment could be purchased. And as we all know, finding equipment during the pandemic was very difficult. So that allowed the balance of the staff. So this is, and I apologize for confusion, but this is a one-time purchase for children and services that I'm requesting today.
Any other questions for Ms. Garrison on agenda item number nine? We have Ms. Garrison on for agenda item number 10. So why don't we finish up with this one, and then we'll perhaps pivot back to agenda item number five, then, if that, if that would be appropriate. So, agenda item number 10 calls for the approval of agreements, contracts, and amendments with the human services providers of services as per the attached list. And Ms. Garrison, you're up.
Yes. These are two grant requests. The first is request for permission to apply for the substance abuse and mental health services grant. And this is for a five-year period, maximum per year is $125,000. We have been working with the District Attorney's Office to try to facilitate a way, ideally to mirror what council approved a while, a couple of weeks ago, for the police diversion to treatment grants, when individuals would interact with the police and had a substance abuse issue, they could be diverted to treatment. We would like to do something very similar for the mental health population, to divert them from going into prison and going to the services that they need. This, this grant specifically is geared towards training. So we are hoping to, if we receive the funds, to be able to continue the training we do with mental health, first aid, training for the police department. It can also be used for the prison, which, you know, it's over five years. So once a prison is maintained by the county, this could be used for their staff as well. It's basically even basic knowledge of mental health illness and how to address that appropriately. And again, with the long-term goal of diverting individuals from the criminal justice system into the appropriate treatment. And the second request is to accept the year three of a three-year grant for the systems of care. This is an amount of $75,000. This grant is geared towards taking the child-serving systems and making them work more in collaboration through these funds, with supportive efforts such as mental health, juvenile mental health court, trauma training for staff and individuals who are interacting with persons that have mental illness. So this would continue these efforts as well as, we also have a piece in here for cultural, linguistics, and competency services and training for staff. There is a subsequent application, which I'll flow beyond the next council's session, which will continue this grant. And that one, we're going to gear more towards making a centralized point of intake into human services, as well as assisting individuals to maneuver through our systems. Because without knowledge of the system, I think sometimes it can be kind of difficult to get to the services you need. So we're hoping to expand on that as well. But the request today is to accept the $75,000 to the systems of care grant.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Garrison?
Much needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison.
Thank you.
And, Doctor, why don't we go back to agenda item number five, then, with the COVID vaccination update? Doctor, I'm going to pronounce your name improperly, and I don't want to say it as informally as you had suggested. So perhaps you could enlighten me as to how to best pronounce your name. Oh, you're on mute. Dr. O, you're on, you're on mute.
Got it. I, yeah, I'll help with the introduction here. My, my name is Lisa O'Mahony. I'm honored to join the Delaware County's evolving health department as interim physician advisor. I come to the position with 36 years of experience in primary care pediatrics, practicing in both Delaware and Chester Counties. So I'm joining a passionate and dedicated team and hope to be a calm voice in our community, relaying critical, timely information as it's relating to vaccine testing, mitigating measures. This is our focus. So tomorrow night, Rosemary Halt, who of course is the director of the COVID initiative in the county, and I will be addressing the group, she will be taking care of logistics, and I will address medical issues as it relates to our vaccine campaign. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer. We are certainly doing lots of testing. I will be hopping up this meeting to go to Upland as they're testing. And they're rolling out in Aston Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday with active immunization. So this is really exciting. Last week, the vaccine initiative rolled Last week, the vaccine initiative rolled out in the 911 Center and the EMS providers were able to get their vaccines. So we delivered 211 vaccines over Thursday and Friday in a fairly soft rollout. But the MCR team and all of the logistics just worked very smoothly and we were able to get lots of individuals immunized. So it's a soft start. We're going to really be ramping up with increased numbers. And as vaccine becomes available, we will be able to do some really mass vaccination. Lots of plans for teachers. The congregate communities are being taken care of right now with divine providence. So there's a lot of partners out there that are getting the vaccine in arms. So this is really exciting. And hopefully, after the inauguration on Wednesday and more political will behind all of this, it really will gear up exponentially. So this is a soft rollout, but very exciting and very well organized. The team is extraordinary.
I would just like to say, welcome. We're thrilled to have you join our team. You're going to be very busy over the next six months. So we look forward to working with you.
Yeah, this is a great team to be part of at a critical time. So I'm really happy to have the honor of this position. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor, and echo the welcome. Perhaps tomorrow night, you know, you could help and maybe Ms. Devlin or Ms. Holt will also be here. We get many questions on a day-to-day basis from folks wondering about, when is it going to be my turn to get the vaccine? When, you know, how would I, how do I make sure that I'm doing what I should be doing? You know, maybe answering some of that tomorrow night or speaking to that tomorrow night, speaking to the availability or lack of availability of the vaccine itself, how big of a constraint that might or might not be would be useful. And also just speaking about whether and when we have a sense of how much vaccine Delaware County is going to be getting for a given week or month or period of time. I don't know from whence that information comes or how frequently it comes or even how accurate. You know, certainly we all read the press reports about folks being promised X and then getting, you know, 0.5 X. But, you know, some of those, if we could perhaps be prepared to speak about that tomorrow night, either yourself or Ms. Holt or Ms. Devlin.
Yeah, as you allude, it definitely is a moving target. But we can give them information and there's going to be a lot of access to information through certainly the websites, but they're developing a call center as well, especially for the elderly to get information. So we'll work on that. I'll get in touch with Rosemary and Lori and we'll make sure that we have that information for you tomorrow night.
Yeah, I think to that point, the elderly, you know, we, I know there's, one of the hot topics in dealing with an aging population is allowing people to age in place. And the benefit to that is they're there in their communities. They're continuing to contribute in a lot of ways that they do while they're able. You know, they volunteer, they support with childcare efforts, they do a lot of things like that. But they also are at a, you know, they're at increased risk. And particularly because they are out in the community. So anything we can do to advise those people, whether it's 75 and above or 65 and above, about, you know, how to get the vaccine and how to make sure that they're going to be notified if there's an opportunity to get in would be really helpful.
Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And moving on to Agenda Item Number 11. This calls for the authorization to purchase 15 Chevrolet Bolt electric vehicles from Whitmore Auto Group off of Co-Stars. And I believe we have Mr. Houdak here to present this. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. This purchase is the initial purchase to get council's project going to convert the fleet to complete EVs. Designated 15 spots for these cars in three different locations. Five are going to go to Fair Acres. Five are going to stay here at the Courthouse complex. And five, we're going to have down at 69th Street in a secured lot for human services and both the probation offices. Again, this is something that council's requested to change everything over in the fleet to EV. At this time, there's not a solution for all 288 vehicles. But as the years, you know, go by, I see a lot of things on the docket that should take care of those solutions. Minibans, pickup trucks, delivery vans are all scheduled to be out in the next two to five years. So that'll help, but this is the initial purchase. The purchase is done on Co-Stars. These vehicles are about $40,000 to the public. Co-Stars offers a discount, which includes some green incentive money, brings the cost of these vehicles down to $29,000 and some change. I've put in a grant with the backing of council and the executive director through the Affordable, through the alternate fuel incentive grant program through the state that if accepted and were approved, will lower the cost of these vehicles $7,500 apiece, which would get us to around the $22,000 range per vehicle, which is what we would pay for a gasoline vehicle of that size. So as I said, right now, we're at a good spot with the $11,000 going through Co-Stars. Hopefully, the state approves our grant request and will make even more manageable by basically buying an electric vehicle for the same price as a gasoline vehicle.
Mr. Houdak, have you also just looked at the savings from a maintenance perspective, from a, you know, I want to say fuel, but whatever the right term would be, that would encompass electricity as well? Of what that's sort of, you know, even if we don't get to the place where it's equal in upfront price, where it, you know, makes sense regardless? Where is sort of the, putting aside the environmental positives to it, where does this become just an economically smart move?
It's not, it's not there yet without the grants and any kind of assistance. The vehicles are still very expensive. We still have to deal with infrastructure and making sure that we have vehicles that are going to provide the services that the county provides. So it's not there yet and without the help of grants, without the help of the state, the federal government. But it will save on gasoline. Right now, gasoline's pretty cheap, but, you know, who knows, it fluctuates so much. It also is going to save time in the shop. We're not going to have these vehicles in as much. There's no oil changes on them. There's no engine components that go bad, oil leaks, things like that. So it will save time in the shop, which, you know, allows my guys to do other things. So it'll save in maintenance, it'll save in gasoline. But as far as the cost, it's not there yet, but they're getting there. I mean, in everything I've read and everything I've researched, the manufacturers of these vehicles are trying to get it to where it's economically feasible.
Well, I think that gets to the crux of Mr. Madden's point, though, which is, how does one analyze the cost? For me, it would seem to be rational to analyze the cost on a per-mile-driven basis over the lifetime of the car and include all aspects of the cost of that car, from gasoline to the engine parts you spoke of, to the oil changes you spoke of, to the employment costs of the people in your shop doing that work. So when you say that the cost isn't there, have you done an analysis on a per-mile-driven basis to compare what the cost of the electric vehicle will be over, you know, the lifetime of the car, say 80,000 miles or 100,000 miles versus the cost of the? And I guess you would have to take a look at, you know, present value in the cost being incurred year one versus year five. Obviously, there's a difference there based upon the time value of money. But have you done such an analysis?
Well, I would also say, and it should be on a more normalized gas price basis, not the historically low levels we're currently seeing.
Sure, and I don't have anything to compare it with electric-wise. That's how I monitor vehicle usage going, you know, right now with regular vehicles. I've done, I've read articles about how people charge back for electric vehicles. It's something that Mr. Lazarus and I have discussed on switching how we charge each department for vehicle usage. What I've gotten as far as an electric vehicle goes in just by reading, is I don't have anything to compare to right now. I need to get the electric vehicles in and start being used and then I'll have something to compare.
If I could jump in. Brian and I've had a conversation. There are, so there are some upfront infrastructure costs that he mentioned that are going to have to be addressed not only by the county, but as the government, but throughout the county to make sure there's an adequate charging network at facilities that are readily accessible. There's no doubt that we'll monitor fuel consumption this year, which leads to a very big challenge for Mr. Houdak in that we have to change the way we charge for use of vehicles because we have been reliant on using gasoline charges as the surrogate for doing that. So we need to look at that. There are also models out there that can put a dollar sign on the carbon emissions that we avoid and we can also then capture the indirect cost. So because of the Co-Stars discount and because of the grants that Mr. Houdak has put in, the purchase price is roughly equivalent to the gas-powered replacements that we would be purchasing. But we do, as we look at this year's budget and the next, we do need to have the mechanism to capture cost avoidance and we're going to do that. Is that fair, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I guess from my perspective, in order for council to make good decisions on this, we need to make sure we have the necessary information. And so we do have all of the information as to what it costs us per mile driven on county cars for the last 10 years. Whether or not we have taken the time to analyze it is a different question, but the data exists. We know how much we have spent on parts, presumably. We know how much we have spent on gasoline. We know how much we've spent on personnel to fix things. So setting aside sort of the dollar per carbon we avoid, you know, to Mr. Madden's point of, you know, let's not even think about the environmental benefits. That's kind of icing on the top perhaps. But just looking at it from a straight dollars and cents perspective, we should be able to compare the amount it costs to drive one mile in a car, in a van, in a truck. We should be able to analyze the depreciation of that car. How quickly do we need to replace them? And therefore get to a per-mile driven for each of the vehicles we have. And then compare that to, although we don't have the data ourselves because we have not been using the electric vehicles, I suspect the data exists, to compare that to a cost per mile driven of electric vehicles. And that comparison would enable council to make sure that we're making the best decision possible. So I would ask that that analysis be done and, you know, maybe report back to us to compare the different models and the cost per mile driven, unless we think that's something that is beyond our capability.
Mr. Chairman, it's a wholly reasonable request and we'll comply with that.
Before we move on, I just want to recognize the Herculean effort of Mr. Houdak, who has, over the last two or three months, done a pretty comprehensive re-education in automotive world, in the automotive world. And I want to just thank you for all of the time and effort you have put into really getting your head around and understanding and embracing this new world of electric vehicles, which has never been a part of the county's fleet or planning. And I, you know, you've really risen to the occasion, really have, you know, engaged with enthusiasm, trying to get, you know, a good grip on how this is all going to work. It is a new world to many of us, and I think including you. And it's an example of many of the things. This is a very good illustration of many of the things that we're doing in this county. We're coming at it from a different place. We're trying something new. And Mr. Houdak has adapted, pivoted, and really embraced it. And I want to say thank you. It's, you know, we're asking you to look at your job in a different way and the tools with which you work in a different way. And it's going to make a big difference in the future for all of us and thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council on Agenda Item Number 11?
I just want to echo the appreciation for the culture change that Brian's engaged in and trying to leave. It's been difficult and sometimes not necessarily appreciated. So thank, just a public thank you for the work you're doing.
Yeah, certainly, and I will also echo the appreciation. I'm glad that we are making such a fundamental change in our infrastructure. But I also do want to make sure, in bridging the two points, that when we are, you know, asked to approve something, I think something as fundamental as understanding the essential cost on a per-mile basis or on a per-year basis or whatever, you know, that that is a reasonable thing that council needs to have before we can approve purchases. So, you know, well, I'm very appreciative of everything you're doing, Brian. I do want to make sure that we understand the economic implications.
Mr. Houdak, while we have you, it's here too. There are some other things with regard to fleet management. I don't want to get too far afield, but maybe we could put this on an agenda item for the next meeting to talk about how we actually monitor the usage. Having software in place, for instance, to track how vehicles are used where they are at all times. I know it's something that we spoke about some time ago in the previous, you know, three years, certainly while I've been on council, that we don't have such software available. I have, I periodically get, you know, people stopping me on the streets saying, hey, there was a county vehicle parked at so-and-so's house. They drive it home every night. I don't know what the rules are with regard to how, whether county vehicles are being used for personal use. I'd like to better understand that and better understand how we actually track where our cars are at all times to make sure that we're optimizing the size of our fleet and making sure that it's being used in the most efficient manner that protects county assets. So I don't know how long it would take to put together such a presentation. Certainly today is not the time for it, but perhaps next meeting, we could have a discussion about fleet management in general.
Sure.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing further, then, thank you, Mr. Houdak.
Thank you.
And we will move on to Agenda Item Number 12, which calls for the approval to accept the Code Blue Award Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in the amount of $78,355. And we have Ms. Hill here with us. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and good morning, council. Due to the need for social distancing in our homeless facilities, the county's cold weather plan or Code Blue has been modified. These new grant funds will be used to place vulnerable homeless persons who are on the street or in places not meant for human habitation, place them into hotels, and that's when the temperature drops below 40 degrees. Through this grant, we can provide an additional 960 hotel vouchers through April 1st. And this program is coordinated through the Community Action Agency. It'll be supplemented with street outreach services provided under a separate grant program. And I am requesting your approval this morning.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Any questions or comments from council?
Can you just give a broad idea of how that measures up against the magnitude of need? You know, is that going to cover the amount of?
Yes, based on, yes, so we discuss it based on what we saw last year and we added onto that, of course, because of COVID, that comes to roughly 10 vouchers per night during the period of performance. And so it is a very short period of performance. It's December through April 1st. So we think that this will cover the need that we're experiencing during the Code Blue.
Great, thank you.
Anything else for Ms. Hill? Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13. This calls for the approval to award contract E10312 between the County of Delaware and LGB Mechanical. And we have Mr. Bierling here to present this in more detail.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
I'm here today to ask for the approval to award contract, executed contract, between County of Delaware and LGB Mechanical and Corporate of 555 North Route 73, West Berlin, New Jersey, 08091, the replacement of the courthouse third floor HVAC system at Delaware County Courthouse, contract number E103120 for the sum of $228,000, subject to the sister's approval. This is a project that's on the Capitol. This is a project that's on the capital uh improvement list and the unit supplies air conditioning for some of the judges' offices in the courthouse on, up on the third floor. The project was advertised on October 29th, 2020 and again on November 5th, 2020 in the Philadelphia Inquirer and also the county website. November, November 12th at 9:00 AM, there was a mandatory meet, pre-bid meeting to look at the project. There were approximately nine contractors that showed up for the pre-bid meeting and the bids for the project were due back on, to central purchasing on December 1st, 2020, prior to 4:00 PM. The bids were opened on December 2nd, 2020 at 10:00 AM in the county council meeting room. We received four bids for the project and reviewing the low, the uh low bid documents submitted by LGB Mechanical, the paperwork was in order. It was recommended that the mechanical contract be awarded to LGB Mechanical, 555 Route 73 um North, West Berlin, New Jersey. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments from Mr. Bierling on agenda item number 13? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 14, which calls for the approval of a professional services agreement with Gillian and Hartman and we have Mr. Bierling here to present this agenda item as well.
Thank you, sir. I'm here today to ask for approval, professional services agreement between the County of Delaware, Gillian Hartman, PO Box 345, Valley Forge, PA, 19481 for engineering services for the backup 911 center at the government center complex for a fee not to exceed $72,300, subject to solicitor's approval. The scope of work will include the following: cooling and electrical loads, analysis, concept study for electrical emergency power and existing generators, HVAC dedicated units for the mechanical space type and location, existing conditions assessment, visit the site and survey the area of renovation for as-built conditions and conditions of the electrical and mechanical, and electrical and mechanical systems. Determine the impact of the existing building system capacity for proposed room renovations. Number three, review the utility and uh systems impacted outside of the proposed renovation area and determine the electrical and mechanical systems upgrade to the basic building as systems. Design development, using the information generated during the analysis and assessment phase develop a, a drawings to convey the overall design concept for mechanical and electrical upgrades and renovations. Submit the drawings to be reviewed by the county, attend the design review with the county. At the final acceptance of the proposed mechanical electrical concept development, a preliminary budget for the cost of the mechanical electrical design concepts, develop a preliminary budget for the mechanical and electrical work. Bidding documents, preparing the mechanical electrical bidding drawings and specifications for the scope of the work approved by the client. Bidding documentation will be submitted for review. Bidding document, document, documents, specifications and drawings will be issued to the client for use of public bidding for the renovation. Bidding phase, attend a pre-bid meeting held at the site, review and respond to RFIs during the bidding process. Construction period, attend initial pre-construction meeting, review contractors' drawings and submittals. Construction meetings will be six site visits and review operations and maintenance manuals and close out the paperwork for the project. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bierling. Any questions or comments from Mr. Bierling on agenda item number 14?
Now, this, this might be a question more appropriately directed to Mr. Lazarus, but it's in connection with the same question. Has it been determined where in the courthouse this is likely to go or is that still uh a moving target? Will it be dependent in part on this contract or uh is it something that will be um, it be going, you know, determination will be going on uh at the same time?
Um, council member, I'll just give a general comment and I'll defer to Mr. Bierling. The um backup 911 center, which is a stated need that Mr. Boyce has brought forward, will be located in the area that is, is and was currently occupied by um telecommunications and/or uh the Bureau of Elections. I think that design is something that Jack is better able to discuss. The reason for this is to make sure that um really the supporting electrical and mechanical systems are, are adequate, but that's the general space and that's one of the reasons why conversation with the Board of Elections last Friday addressed finishing the relocation of the um uh Elections Bureau out to the war. So Jack, you want to add anything about specific location?
Well, one, one of the things I want to point out is Gillian Hartman has actually done the uh 911 Emergency Backup Center for Chester County. One of the things they pointed out to us, which I talked to Mr. Boyce about at 911 is they, they just don't leave that area sit dormant. That area is used on a daily basis. So let's say round figures, they have 20 911 operators that are working. They'll have 12 at the 911 center. The other eight will be stationed at the auxiliary center or emergency center, if you will. So this equipment gets used daily. It's not that you have it in the closet and if you need it, you pull it out. It's something that actually makes some, some pretty good sense is what was pointed out to me.
Some of our discussion also was that with the space is that there are needs for meeting areas in the building so that building flexibility into our spaces is important so that we can have uh rooms for training, conference rooms and other gatherings that serve multiple purposes um as we go down, uh relooking the, at various spaces throughout the building.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks.
Any other questions on agenda item number 14? All right, we'll move on to agenda item number 15, which calls for the approval of a contract between the County of Delaware and JR Metzger for electrical study for emergency service building and we have Mr. Bierling to present this as well.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm here today to ask for the approval to award a CoStar's contract between Delaware County and JR Metzger, 3101 Concord Road, Aston, 19104 for electrical study for emergency services building, Lima, PA for the amount not to exceed $46,000, subject to the solicitor's approval. This is the emergency services building, electrical study at the emergency services center, 160 North Middletown Road, Lima. This is a project that's needed to be addressed, the electrical wiring components for, for the campus. The electrical, electrical contractor shall conduct a facilities inspection prior to installing recording meters and circuit tracing specific herein to produce an accurate uh assessment that identifies code compliance and all visible discernible defects, including electrical panels and circuits. Require in the meeting and, and circuit uh tracing. The electrical contractor shall focus on the following property elements: electrical systems, transformers, electrical generator, power distribution, lighting. Electrical system inspection and testing. Contractors shall conduct the following inspections and tests on electrical panels, low voltage circuits and breakers according to the inventory attached. Infrared testing. Uh, number two, ground NEC code compliance, overcurrent in wiring methods. Three, bonding NEC code compliance on overcurrent and wire methods. Four, physical condition, check uh hull closures, proper coverings, missing breakers, clearances, foreign matter, dust, oil and combustibles. Circuit breakers, uh check for smooth operation and condition of, of molded cases. Electrical drawings, provide electrical existing conditions, electrical power and distribution drawings of each electrical power and distribution drawing for each electrical panel. Also provide one-line diagram from marked up hand drawings. Product deliverabilities, provide Excel format uh files along with PDF electronic files of all recorded uh panel readings on a thumb drive. Provide AutoCAD drawings to be submitted of identified circuits. Number three, provide new panel schedules in Word format based on a, a circuit tracing results from the hard copies of each panel schedule attached to each panel. Four, provide and attach permanent panel ID tags to the face of every panel. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Bierling. Any questions for Mr. Bierling on agenda item number 15? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Mr. Bierling.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, agenda, um, agenda item number 16 calls for the approval to award a contract to WB Mason for uh office supplies for the courthouse and Fair Acres for two years and we have uh Ms. Burdette here to present this.
Good morning, council.
How are you?
Um, I'm here today um to ask for council's approval to award contract CP dash 102220 to WB Mason Incorporated to furnish and deliver office supplies to Delaware County Courthouse Fair Acres for a period of two years, the combined cost of $79,064.72, subject to solicitor's approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Burdette?
Uh, just wanted to say welcome to uh, to, to, to life as the interim director of purchasing. We appreciate you stepping up to take that on. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further, then we'll move on to agenda i, item number 17, which calls for the approval to advertise for bids to furnish and deliver janitorial household and paper products for Fair Acres Geriatric Center for a period of one year and Ms. Burdette is here to present this as well.
Hi, I'm here again to ask for approval to advertise for bids for furnishing and delivering janitorial um household and paper products to Fair Acres Geriatric Center for a period of one year.
All right, seems pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just, I, I thought, I was under the impression that Fair Acres had um their own purchasing, did their own purchasing and had their own purchasing department. Is that?
They do.
Yes.
Um, I also, Jim Peterson, I spoke to him and I asked him, I asked a question of why it was only a one-year contract and why it wouldn't be like a five-year or three-year? He says because of the price increase, that's how they get the best prices.
But I mean, the ordinary course of business, they do, they go out and get the prices and bring it to us and we approve, is that?
Well, we're, we're advertising for bid.
Okay, but it's, it's their purchasing department doing the?
Yes.
Okay.
We're just advertising the bid.
Got it, thank you.
But I do um remind council that the person who's authorized to um solicit bids and, and enter into them, enter um manage the agreement is the uh purchase, the director of purchasing regardless of whether Fair Acres has their own um ability to do their own um advertising.
All right, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to agenda other, item number 18, which is another um agenda item with regard to Fair Acres and we'll look to Ms. Burdette to present this.
Yes, I'm here to ask for approval to advertise for bid for furnishing and delivering of USP medical oxygen for Fair Acres Geriatric Center for a period of five years.
Any questions or comments from council? All right, that was probably the softest entry into any uh director presenting, so I appreciate you being here, Ms. Burdette, appreciate you stepping up as others have said and we will uh speak to you tomorrow night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda other, item number 19, this calls for the approval to accept a grant from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency in an amount of $49,352 and we have Ms. Hibbert here to present this item. Good morning, ma'am. And we have Mr. Wraith here as well, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Mrs. Zidic. I, I'm going to handle this morning's meeting, if I may. Um, this grant, we were identified along with nine other counties to receive up to $50,000 um for this grant application. We met with um Operation Department along with the district attorney and the public defender and Judge Kapuzi met to discuss options. The option that we're presenting today is the option that Operation had submitted and everybody seemed to be in agreement on. And what we're looking to do is, actually, there's a mistake on this and I apologize. The term is actually February 1st, not the 20, uh 21st, February 1st through September 30th. So I don't even know if I need to resubmit it or if you guys can fix that on your end for tomorrow's meeting.
I'd like to Mr. Martin and Ms. Coogan as to uh what would be the uh most appropriate. So this would be to add a, as the agenda item is written now, it does not have a timeframe written out that I can see. This would be to add a timeframe on there?
No, the term is on there, um it's just on the bottom left, um but it says February 21st, it should say February 1st through March 30th of this year.
That was probably on your paperwork and I questioned it so I didn't put it on the agenda so I can add it.
Thank you.
So it's, what are you, what are the terms so I will add it for tomorrow night's agenda?
2121 to 93021.
Okay.
It's a, it's a eight-month grant, so it was very time-centered. We're also submitting this to both submit and accept due to the time constraints of February 1st being the start through September 30th. But we're submitting this grant and we're, and we're looking to try to do something, you know, helpful for individuals being released from the prison who have opioid addictions and um co-recurring disorders. We're looking to identify these individuals through GAG-91 and GAG-92 hearing releases and basically what we're trying to do is a stopgap, for lack of a better word, is to provide them on withdrawal string bags upon release from prison, which would include Narcan, which would be some, uh, which we, an in-kind service through the district attorney's office, um accepted, accepted transpasses, a Walmart gift card for essentials, disposable face mask and um also to provide um information, whether it be human service, probation information, public defender information, treatment information, so it's all readily available in, in that, in that bag uh upon release. Um, you know, the first two weeks of discharge are usually the most daunting for an individual being released and we thought these items would be of particular help um for many of our um clients. We're also looking to seek to do three trainings through um Crozier Center of Excellence for criminal justice practitioners. That would include the probation department, the public defender's office, district attorney, our criminal justice advisory board, the jail oversight board if they're interested. Um, we're in the process of um developing a reentry coalition through our C-JABs. So these individuals, we would provide, you know, a webinar training during this eight month period. So these are some of the items. Uh, Ms. Hibbert's here today. Um Danielle will be doing the formal meeting tomorrow as I'm not available and on Monday she will become the acting director of adult probation and parole. So um Danielle, both Danielle and Nicole DePompey, the office manager, did lion's share of this grant because it was very time-sensitive, so I appreciate that. And that's all I have. Mr. Zidic.
Thank you. Any uh questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I just want to um thank uh Ms. Hibbert and, and uh the rest of the team, Mr. Wraith uh for the work here. I think you've, you've found a very um impactful way to take, you know, a relatively modest sum of money um that is basically found money uh on such a short sort of timeframe of, of notification about this opportunity and, and found a way to really make this impactful. Um, I, I, as we've talked about many times before, it's that crucial window upon release from jail for someone who's suffering from an opioids addiction, um you know, where they're between 40 and 60 times more likely to die at an overdose in the first three or four weeks, um giving them a, a packet of, of things and particularly Narcan, um that can very much save a life. Um, I think you found a really um, a really good way to put this to use, so thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, uh thank you for appearing and we'll speak tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number 20, this is uh confirming the intent of the county to establish a community, commercial, I'm sorry, commercial property assessed clean energy CPACE program for a district consisting of the entire county and uh who we have presented this. We have Mr. Lichtenstein uh and um is uh Goodrich Cairns here as well.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of council. Uh, today we were seeking your approval to a firm going forward with the CPACE program.
Thanks, great question. Quite a bit, a little bit of an echo. Um, not sure if it's uh coming through on others as well and um, yeah, we, we still, could I ask, check your sound on your? And then maybe we'll have to speak very slowly.
Uh, so Act 30 of 2018 empowered counties.
I think it's someone else who's not on mute. Can ever, literally everyone go on mute except for Laura? Let's give that a shot. Well, Laura, now you're on mute.
I got muted too. Act 30 of 2018 enabled counties to create CPACE districts. The commercial property assessed clean Property Assessed Clean Energy Act is only applicable to commercial properties, no residential in the state of Pennsylvania. It was the 34th state to adopt a PACE program. Currently in Pennsylvania, there are 10 counties who have adopted PACE programs, three that have passed resolutions of intent to go forward with creating a PACE program. And we would like Delaware County to be the 14th today. We, this is our third effort at this. If you recall, in March of 2020, came before council requesting, and there was a lot of support for it. However, due to COVID, we immediately shut down that week. That was March 17th, and we weren't able to progress. What we would like to do is seek council to affirm their intent to initiate a CPACE district, which would be followed by letters from the county clerk going to the 49 municipalities establishing the district, and then come back to you likely with the chief sustainability officer affirming the program particular guidelines for Delaware County, as well as a tri-party agreement to move forward. As we've talked about in the past, CPACE essentially allows commercial property owners a better chance of having the ability to install clean energy processes in existing buildings by an extended lending period, not necessarily what we are used to in a commercial building project, which would be an interim or a bridge loan. This is longer. It attaches itself to the property itself. The county treasurer, we have talked with Mr. Lichtenstein and I about adding those assessments onto the tax rules, which she thought was completely possible, but may require an update to county treasurer's software. The property assessment then is increased by the private finance annually in order to, until it's paid off. It stays with the property. This comes at a potential no cost to the county of Delaware, as the county of Delaware can seek an administrative fee in order to process any CPACE loan.
Thank you for bringing this.
With that, I would add.
John, do you have anything to add? You're on mute.
But I was told to go on mute. No, I'm sorry. Just to add, the reason this is being done with a resolution then being followed by an ordinance, the act says that a county that establishes a program must notify any municipality before adopting the official legislation establishing the program. So that's why we're doing a resolution today declaring the intent and asking for the notice to go out so that council can then act in the future to adopt the program in whole. Also, the program per the statute, there should be within the adoption by counter, county, at least some details with respect to operational guidance and guidelines. And so that was one of the reasons why, you know, we thought, and, you know, it was followed up with further discussion with Laura and Howard, that it made sense to bring the new sustainability officer on board, when, when she comes on board, to have her involved in how to structure this program going forward.
Thank you.
I would add that not only does this provide access to other sources of capital and help increase commercial development, that does add to county tax rolls, helps generate additional revenue for us, as well as seeing clean energy improvements made.
Yeah, I'll say, John, push mute. I think it's your sound that's creating the. To me, this is a no-brainer. This is a great opportunity for our businesses who have, have a more access, better access to capital to make these improvements that improves the environment and improves their bottom line. We already have businesses in Delaware County who have made several inquiries about this program. So we know we have people at the ready, waiting to take advantage of this program. So we will not suffer from a lack of demand. We have many neighbors who have set up their programs. Our neighbors in Philadelphia already have several projects underway, you know, multimillion-dollar projects underway with this financing. So I'm completely behind it. I appreciate you bringing this back to us. And I look forward to, you know, hearing how the, how we decide to meet out the details in terms of administration.
Joe Brady, the guy who yesterday gave me kind of a, an identity crisis because I realized he's significantly younger than.
All right. Any other questions or comments with regard to agenda item number 20? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 21. Thank you, Mr. Lichtenstein. I believe Ms. Goodrich Cairns, you're going to stick with us for the next agenda item. This calls for the approval of a resolution with appointing the Delaware County Industrial Development Authority as the grantee for purposes of local administration of the R-CAP grant. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin and Ms. Goodrich Cairns.
I think first of all, I'll apologize. I'm not sure that the request for agenda action may have been, may not have been included in the material circulated on Friday. That will be provided after this meeting. But again, this has to do with confirming the internal mechanics for meeting the regulatory requirements of the grant. Money's going to utilization and the modernization of the 911 program. But I'll let Laura address some of these mechanics, which she and the folks at the Commerce Center are much more acutely aware of. And it would be our collective recommendation that for purposes of the state, the IDA be designated as the technical grantee with the county and the 911 department being the sub-grantee, so that the paperwork is handled at the right level and the money gets passed through with minimization of any risk of paperwork snafus. And I'll let Laura jump in.
Great. Yes, there was a request that our authority take on the R-CAP for the 911 center. The county has not as self-administered an R-CAP in the past to date over two different public authorities. We have managed just north of two, two dozen releases, 16 projects for $52 million in, that was backed by $200 million in investment. And we have an ongoing additional $40 million in R-CAP releases. So we are sort of the technical arm for the county when it comes to these R-CAP programs. The R-CAP is considered to be the most arduous grant program in the state of Pennsylvania and potentially in the United States. I would argue it's actually the EDA program, but that's a different story. Grantees under the R-CAP program are monitored and they have to go through Public Works Law to the best of their ability. There's bidding processes, contract processes, prevailing wage, steel certification, and Fair Trade Practices Act that have to be administered and followed. And so that is where the role of the Industrial Development Authority will come in. And in the assumption of the grantee role, we end up taking a position in the grant, but we do not take your grant dollars away from you per se. The only thing I think we'll be requesting is to make sure that we are held from the solicitor side.
I just want to say that I think it was very artfully put that we're trying to avoid paperwork, paperwork snafus here, because this is, this grant is notorious for all of the obligations that it puts on its recipients. And paperwork snafus are quite common. So I feel much better having it run through the IDA, which is a board that, and our Commerce Center, and with Ms. Goodrich Cairns, which is very experienced in these complicated grants. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on agenda item number 21?
No, just a minor one. I think there's a little typo in the agenda. It's access and capital are flipped. It should be R-CAP, Capital Access Program. Otherwise, looks great.
It's actually, that is the right way, but it used to be called R-CAP, and that's why everybody still calls it R-CAP. They changed it and nobody, everyone still calls it R-CAP. So the running joke is you can tell how old people are, whether they call it R-CAP or.
Right. Okay. Interesting.
Well, to record show, I think Ms. Schaefer just called Mr. Madden old. We will move on to, thank you, Ms. Goodrich Cairns. We will move on to agenda item number 22, which calls to, for, to authorize the executive director to prepare, issue, and advertise an RFP for government policy development and representation services at the state and federal government levels. And we have Mr. Lazarus here to present this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A few months ago, I came to council asking to extend the contract with Capital Strategies, who currently provides the service for us in Harrisburg. And the request was to extend that through June 30th. Council approved that request, but also asked that we compete a follow-on contract. So this is consistent with council's direction to compete professional services on a best value basis. So I'm just following up on what council asked us to do.
Yeah, I would, my only comment there, Mr. Lazarus, would be that, that you specifically allow for the possibility of needing to bid them separately. There is not everybody who is licensed to be, or registered as a lobbyist in Harrisburg is also registered in, to federally lobby. And that is, in fact, the case with Capital Strategies. They are only registered, because we asked them on a call, they're only registered in Harrisburg. So it, recognizing, you know, we're asking probably for different skill sets. It may not be the most cost-effective thing to get, to go to one firm for both.
I actually had a similar conversation with Mr. Henry when he asked about it. And what I would recommend that we could do is make a minor change to the item and say to advertise requests for proposals, you know, we can imply that they're separate.
Yeah, I'd, I'd support that change or, you know, or to, not just imply, but to allow for them to be separate proposals. Somebody could come in to do both, or somebody could come in to do one. I mean, I know we've set up other bids like that in the past for professional services.
Appreciate your recommendation.
Could we use the terminology and/or federal government levels? And slash or?
I would be in favor of whatever accurately reflects the intent of council, so that would be fine with me as well.
Mr. Martin, you know, do you think that captures what we're all talking about here? You're speaking very softly or you're on mute?
I think both changes. The word request should be plural, and it should be and slash or.
Okay. All right. Well, Ms. Coogan, if you can make that change then tomorrow night, I think those are good ideas. Any other questions or comments on agenda item number 22? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 23, which calls for the approval of a professional agreement with Marion Jackson to provide services as the interim director, director of elections for the period of February 1, 2021 through June 30, 2021, in an amount not to exceed $100,000. And we have Mr. Lazarus to present this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a contract similar to what we had with Ms. Jackson to get us through the November election. The intent of that contract was to get us through the November election, and I think we were highly successful. This contract now really seeks to provide guidance, but also to capture the, all the changes that we made and all the processes that we put in place, and also to help guide, serve as a guide as we recruit a permanent director of elections. In that regard, we have posted that position, and we do have several candidates who we are interviewing right now. So this is sort of a transition. It is certainly the last time I hope that we have to go to an external resource to do this as well. The estimate is based upon the same payment that we made last time for a period of five months. There are, the contract has incorporated some of the amendments we made during the process as well. This was presented to the Board of Elections last Friday, and the board recommended that council adopt it or approve it.
So can I just clarify that this contract and the one that we're going to be doing in number 24, they're both not to exceed with an hourly rate that's equal to the hourly rate that we used in the last election cycle?
That's correct. The contract allows for termination with 15 days' notice. It's an hourly rate with both a weekly and a monthly cap on it.
And it's conceivable, and I mean, actually may be probable, that the hours that were put in, in the prior election cycle, which were crazy, and they went up to their not-to-exceed number, that might not happen in this, this situation because there isn't the urgency, hopefully, and the, you know, sort of scrambling that we were dealing with in the prior election.
I, last, the last, during the last election, both Ms. Jackson and Ms. Bernie worked well in excess of the time indicated in their agreements. Our hope is that, as with many things, is that we get things down to a state where they are done with a lot more normalcy and regularity and not under the semi-crisis mode that we're under. I do want to reemphasize to you that the November election was wholly compliant, inclusive, and there were no issues with it. But it did take a lot of effort to get us there. And we did develop a lot of really good processes that we seek now to internalize. So that's the rest of the story, if you will. And I also want to just correct what I said. That contract has a cap on weekly, daily and weekly rates. So I, again, I went to the Board of Elections to make sure it was still their intent to do this, and they expressed that it was.
And Howard, I'm sorry, just to be clear, this contract would terminate if we hired a permanent director of elections prior to the expiration?
I think it'd be a transition period, but if we're able to hire a director of elections, then there would be the transition that would go through it. And if we were able to hire a director of elections in a timely manner that allowed that person to take over smoothly.
Yeah, I just want to point out for people who are listening and for council, probably most of whom are aware, just because we've had to run for office. I mean, petitions start going out in mid-February. And so the process of getting those petitions approved is actually a little bit behind schedule even, because the secretary of state's office is a little bit behind. But we are, you know, committees are registering for candidates. I mean, the, the process of getting the election started is already underway. And while we're not going to see the volume that we saw in the last election, there are a great many, let's just say, complications added by the fact that we've got two sets of ballots for every precinct. And this is also an election where all of the election board run for office. So every judge of elections and inspector will be running. It creates a lot of complexity and a lot of moving parts. I think we really need to make sure that somebody is managing up at the top, because just managing the ballot alone is, is a lot more complicated. And I think as we can see, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be a number of contracts that are going to be coming before council that are being managed by the existing staff. And somebody to sort of make sure that all of the processes are functioning, we just don't have the time that we used to have. So I, I don't love continuing on with contractors, but it was tough to get the attention of election professionals while everybody was dealing with not just the election itself, but the complications of the counts and the lawsuits afterwards. So I know Mr. Lazarus, Mr. Kane, and they're making good progress on the hiring of a director, but I do think we need to keep some continuity in place. And I can tell you also that I know Ms. Jackson is, has been working with the existing staff to sort of structure or restructure the department to make sure that processes will have an internal supervisory person going forward.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. One other thing I would add is that there are also, is the is the potential for statewide referenda on the ballot in May, which creates another level of complexity for the election. So our goal is to move from what was really, in many ways, a disruptive process for the remainder of county operations to where we have a best practice Department of Elections. And that desire is reflected in the budget that council adopted for this year by increasing the resources available for our elections.
I thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Any other questions or comments on agenda item number 23? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number 24, which calls for the approval of a professional services agreement with Christina Peroni to provide project management services in relation to the May primary election. And we have, in addition to improvements in the medical examiner's facilities, formation of the county health department and other initiatives. And we have Mr. Lazarus here to present this one as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This agreement is also a revival of the agreement that Ms. Pruney had. As you remember, Ms. Pruney was originally hired to oversee the development of the Election Operations Center at the Wharf. And it was a highly successful condensed engagement. We did extend her contract after that to participate in organizing election day processes that dealt with collection of everything from the mail-in ballots at the drop boxes all the way through the election day teams. There's a need also to incorporate and capture those processes as well. I am, I've added some other additional project management tasks in the event that the election doesn't consume all of her time. There are some things that are of importance to council and the community. Those include improvement to the medical examiner's facilities and operations. I am planning on bringing an item to council at the next meeting to conduct a review of the medical examiner's office, which does have the support of Dr. Hillman. There are some matters that deal with the formation that county health department did, really addressed going from the overall plans, making sure that the nuts and bolts aren't dropped. And then the other thing that I had added in there is we still need to engage with the state on negotiation of a lease agreement for the Old Chester Court House. So I can't commit that. Ms. Pruney will be able to do all those things, but I do want to optimize the time available. Long term, we do need to address project management within the county government structure. And this is also a transition for that. So again, I ask for approval of this agreement. This has been recommended for approval by the Board of Elections with the firm understanding that the priority of Ms. Pruney's efforts are in the election.
Just out of curiosity, will we be, to the extent she's working on these other projects, is her expense going to be? I mean, are we asking her to track her hours so that her costs can be allocated? Or is it just going to all be paid for by elections?
No, we are going, we are going to track both Ms. Jackson's and Ms. Pruney's hours. We learned a lot of lessons, you know, we did things in a, as I said, in sort of a crisis mode. I have spoken with the controller and we have put in the requirement for specifically what we're looking for in their monthly invoices in terms of recording of hours and summaries of what they've worked on. So appreciating Ms. Phillips' input on that. And we've kind of cleaned that up a good bit.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns for Mr. Lazarus on agenda item number 24? All right, agenda item number 25 calls for an informational presentation to inform council members of the 2021 budget rate allocation for the courts. And I don't see Ms. McComas here. Is Mr. Lazarus, so you're going to give us a little information about what we're going to see tomorrow night?
I can, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to adoption of, you know, the budget, the president judge expressed some concerns about how the funds were allocated. I do want to again state that Judge Kelly was a big help and he is, he was very magnanimous in his support of what we were doing. But he also had concerns about his ability to make sure the justice system worked to the benefit of the residents of the county. And working with them in a process that was helpfully facilitated by council member Madden, we came to an agreement on the budget for the courts. But Judge Kelly did ask that we realign certain aspects. Those pages have been provided to you. This does not increase the budget, nor does it require a formal modification of the budget. But we did commit to Judge Kelly that we would come back to council. And I think publicly discussing and disclosing those changes and accounting are consistent with the council's goal of transparency. So that's what we are going to present. We want to make sure that everything is done, as I said, with full transparency.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Any questions from council? All right, hearing none, none will move on to agenda item number 26, which has to do with the approval of a professional services agreement with Arthur J. Gallagher. And we have Mr. Kane here to present this, or we don't. Yes, we do. There he is. Kane. There you are.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. We are asking for approval of a professional service agreement with A.J. Gallagher and Company in the amount of $66,726 for a renewal period of six months from January 1, 2021 through June 30, 2021 for management administration of self-insured workers' compensation, Hart and Long Act 477, and high retention casualty claims programs, including the mandatory reporting under Medicare, Medicaid, and S H I P Extension Act of 2007 M M S E A. This is subject to the solicitor's approval. So this is a professional services contract that is done through Gallagher. We originally received a claim request, a management request for a full year, but we instructed Gallagher only provide it for six months as this business will be bid out in the next couple of weeks for for potential new insurance brokerage. So we asked for this amount, which is less than half of what the original amount was, to be approved so we can have management as claims go forward.
Mr. Kane, just to clarify, so when you say less than half, do you mean less than half on a sort of pro rata basis?
That's correct. That's correct, Mr. Madden.
Okay. And so the timeline for bidding this out is going to be such that we we ought to have completed that and you'll be ready to bring, you know, sort of the proposed winning provider before the six month time is expired.
So that is correct. This is not only the agenda, but we are sending out information letters this week to brokers that we wish to use for the benefits brokerage business, which has been brought before this council before. Once those letters are going out, the next step is to do the bid process in conjunction with our procurement people, Ms. Perdade, who's in the interim role, to get a bid out this week or early next week for the insurance business with the intention of having vendors in by, you know, February and a bid awarded March 31st. And that would give three months of time to roll into and start effectively July 1.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, hearing none, moving on to agenda item number 27. This calls for the review of compensation study findings, salary structure, and next steps. And we have Mr. Kane here, who I think is going to give us a little bit of teaser on this.
So as council is fully aware, the county has been going to go in a compensation study. It's been well spoken about, well talked about. And now we'd like to start talking about the findings. And not only that, but then how to implement those findings into a new compensation structure. That's part of the presentation that we're going over tomorrow night. It's a little sample of what the structure will look like. This is the first time the county has ever done this. This is the first time the county's had a structure and also looked at data from all over the area to say, what should we pay a certain job? What should we pay Jim Kane as the head of HR? Should we pay other people? And now we can use that structure to make adjustments to people who have sat below cycle for a long time, as well as some people that are probably not paid to the market. We have some findings, some of the findings are of interest to you. But more importantly, what we also want to talk about in our presentation tomorrow night is about how we're going to implement and how we're going to, you know, follow through on the commitment we made when we first started the study in 2019, December of 2019, with the goal of really two things. Recruit better, retain better. Recruit, you know, employees who come to work here and using all the techniques we can to recruit and having compensation be a strong point. And as well as retain those good employees and have them stay here because that benefits all of our departments down the road. So that is the summary of what we'll be talking about tomorrow night. It'll be a brief presentation and there would be, there will be a number of activities between now and the next council meeting in February, and then again before February 17th, to make sure council is fully informed about how this process will work going forward, both for bargaining union, I mean, excuse me, non-bargaining employees, and then again for bargaining employees.
Mr. Kane, you mentioned, first of all, I appreciate the tremendous effort that went into shepherding this study to to where it is today. And I realize this is still only one step in a process that will continue from here. But I want to just highlight one item. You said a number of times, you know, paying people better. And, you know, I think one of the reasons why this has taken a bit more time than originally it hoped to get to council is that council made quite clear that when they thought of compensation, compensation isn't just pay, it's also benefits. So I want to make sure that part of what's going to be presented isn't lost tomorrow and going forward, that, you know, compensation really is a twofold element. And, you know, I think making sure that the benefits portion is, is a, you know, right alongside of pay as we talk through what's appropriate. You know, let's just make sure that 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 doesn't get sort of lost in the mix and just stay on pay.
Thank you, councilman, and it is part of the process. We will go through that tomorrow night. Surveys were done on benefits usage for our different neighboring counties. In terms of how we use the benefits dollars, we want to talk about that a little bit, but that's certainly part of it. You know, we did ask the question in in every session we had. By the way, we've had sessions now on three different occasions with 60 different directors around the county. So this has been vetted a number of times. We'll have a fourth meeting before we finally go to implementation, after council approves our process. And one of the things we asked that managers is, tell me what you, what employees tell you about, you know, paying benefits here at the county. And they'll say, well, the pay's low, but the benefits are great. Well, it's hard to define what great means on the benefit side, but it's easy to define what pay means on the low side. So we have already talked to our directors at regular length about the fact that we need to look at the benefits program and that should be incorporated as part of the decision about how we adjust pay. And that, of course, has been already recommended a few times about changes we can make in the benefits program. But there's other things we can do. And we're also doing a separate analysis on that right now. But the focus tomorrow night will be on the compensation structure because that is brand new. And we want to make sure that that's clearly vetted with every member of council. And once we've done that, we can come back to you with those additional questions. And benefits will certainly be one of those areas we need to address, and we will address.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Any other questions on agenda item number 27? All right, we'll see you tomorrow night, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Agenda item number 28 calls for the approval to purchase furniture from C O F C O through Co-Stars. And we have Ms. Nicolardi here to present this. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm here today for approval to purchase furniture for the new COSA office on the second floor at the Baldwin Towers in Eddie Stone. The furniture is through Kofco, an authorized Co-Stars vendor, for a cost not to exceed $343,027. There are no county funds covering this. Costs for this is covered through funds we receive from the Department of Aging.
So in the absence of us buying this furniture, we would not be able to use this money otherwise?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Yes, Ms. Nicolardi, could you just give us an update on the timing of when you'll be, when COSA will be officially kind of moving into Baldwin Towers?
We're hoping very early March. Right now, they are still working on the floor at Eddie Stone. I was there last week. Carpets are ripped up. They've been making some progress in the fit out. So we're hoping that we will be able to take occupancy the first week of March. And once this is approved for the furniture, that will be delivered in four to six weeks and put together within a week. And so hopefully by mid-March, we should be completely moved back in. Thank you.
I would just also like to note the great agility that Ms. Nicolardi has shown in continuing services during the pandemic and trying to orchestrate a move during that time. I think it's admirable, and I think we can all take juggling lessons from her. So thank you.
If there's nothing further, thank you, Ms. Nicolardi. We'll see you tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 29. This calls for the approval of a grant acceptance between Pima and the County of Delaware. And we have Mr. Boyce here to present this. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Before you discontinue for a couple of grant awards, and I'll begin with the first one, which is a request to accept a grant from Pennsylvania Emergency Management, the NAMM-1 Division, for $473,248 for a GIS integration project. The GIS system in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, we're moving to a statewide system. Basically, all addresses in the county need to be formatted to the same level of data so that they can be adjusted. So the 13 Main Street in Delaware County and 13 Main Street in Chester County match up. We requested through Pima their 15% funding. We submitted a project and the project has been approved. The project was a joint partnership between Director Health and Planning. So this project is deeply embedded with our planning department and we're hopefully a partnership that'll grow over the rest of the of the year as we move forward. If we are awarded this, we would be seeking two sole source contractors, Esri, which is the national recognized leader in GIS data and the platform we use, and E B D, which is the company the Commonwealth has targeted as primary for integration of this data. The only continuing cost, if we elected to continue with this after one year, would be approximately about $25,000 to maintain the licensing and training.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments for Mr. Boyce on agenda item number 29? All right, hearing none, moving on to agenda item number 30. This calls for the approval of an agreement between Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through Pima and the County of Delaware, and for a Southeastern Pennsylvania Regional Task Force Mutually Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement. And I'll look to Mr. Boyce to explain this more fully.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This grant from the Commonwealth, from FEMA or FEMA through the Commonwealth is our Urban Area Security Initiative Grant. The five counties that surround us partner, and we are eligible for special funding from Homeland Security for identified high risk. The grand total of this grant is $13,520,000. It would be distributed between the five counties. The counties submitted a threat hazard index risk analysis that we scored our risk in a number of projects. From that, the FEMA awards the grants back down based on specific projects that we do. Some of the highlights of the projects we do are obviously counterterrorism is a large part of it, intercommunication between the 911 center, pandemic planning, many things like that are in this grant. Montgomery County serves a fiduciary agent on this. They receive 5% of the grant award for that. For the majority of costs, we share equally in the projects like a helicopter. That's a, that's a 20% allocation by county. And then in real numbers, about $1.6 million will be coming back directly to the county for projects that would be hosted here but serve a regional nexus. We were successful, we believe, in increasing our county's award from 1.1 million to 1.6 million. We were successful, we believe, in increasing our county's award from 1.1 million to 1.6 million in the upcoming year with the introduction of four major new projects. Election security, medical planning, cybersecurity, and increased focus on soft targets in support of our law enforcement partners.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Any questions from council?
Yeah, so those projects that are based in Delaware County, election security, cybersecurity, they have to explain how that works that we would be investing in election security and it would benefit the region. It sounded like they have to be regional projects.
Yes, while there's specific threats to a resilient county is a resilient region is the way to put that. But our way of looking at election security, if we were to propose that, is that tools, is that resources, is that training? We would be able to do that here and then support a regional, better election security. It does not necessarily mean we need to buy the same project. The larger projects, the greatest amount of this funding are for joint projects shared between five counties. But it does allow for a percentage to be addressed to your county specific needs.
So we wouldn't have to, if we did a education, election education, would we be inviting the other counties to participate or no?
Not necessarily, no. Again, it's, they do recognize, and that's our 14% share. When all is done, it comes back to addressing a resilient county, again, as a resilient region. So while sometimes we partner on that, those specifics be cameras, whatever they would be, would be identified and they would stay for the most part in the county. Every, every dollar we get is a regional dollar, is a statewide dollar and in theory applicable across the Commonwealth. These are usually more targeted projects for a specific county. Or if we hired a planner, I know we're looking at a cybersecurity planner and another medical measures planner. That $100,000 usually goes to the salary amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Boyce on agenda item number 30? Moving on to agenda item number 31, this calls for the approval of an agreement for a lot of stuff that looks very similar to that, which we did, except this seems to appoint Mr. Boyce as the designation agent. But Mr. Boyce, perhaps you could explain this agenda item more carefully.
Chairman, I apologize. Was the state homeland security grant up next?
This was approval of an agreement between the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through Pima and the County of Delaware's subrecipient and appointing Timothy Boyce as the designation agent for, to accept 2020 State Homeland Security Grant Program Funds valued at 1.296 million. Yep, that one.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I believe there may be a language issue that I'll address with the solicitor in a minute. I believe the designation of agent is for the $75,000 hazard mitigation. Whereas the County of Delaware accepts the Homeland, State Homeland Security Program. I know that some of these grants came over just this week, so.
Okay, well, perhaps offline, then after the meeting, you could sort this out with Mr. Martin and Ms. Kugan and make sure that we have the agenda item accurate. But well, take us through at least that aspect of 31, which is, which is right.
Yes, sir. The state, the state homeland security, again, Pima designates to, to the 13 regions, Delaware County again being one of the southeast, state homeland security grant dollars. These dollars are available to all the counties in the Commonwealth. Again, our region receives a significant amount of those. We are scheduled for to receive 1.296, $1,296,000 in state homeland security projects. Those projects again are identified for the all hazards, our targets for those grant dollars. A good portion of that is the Everbridge system, which is behind Delco Alert, a product we use all the time. So that's, will be taking off as a regional project. And then the other major projects for the region include cybersecurity, soft targets, intelligence airing and emergent threats. Emergent threats is an issue identified of the traditional IEDs bombing and those kind of asymmetric warfare which we're seeing. Those funds will be with our partnership through the District Attorney's Office and our Police Chiefs Association. They will identify the specific needs on that project.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boyce on agenda item number 31?
Mr. Chairman, I made an error. It's the next item where Mr. Boyce becomes the designation agent. So I will change that out of that item and it belongs in number 32.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's okay, but that's a smooth segue into agenda item number 32, which calls for the acceptance of a grant in an amount of $75,000 and includes a 25% matchup county funds. Again, this is with regard to Pima, the county's natural hazard mitigation plan. So we'll look to Mr. Boyce for agenda item number 32.
Thanks, Chairman. Every four years, the Commonwealth requires the county to update its hazard mitigation plan. The plan we use to designate flood areas and our response prevention of those types of natural disasters. FEMA will notify, or Pima will notify us that we are eligible for funding to update our plan. It's a very complex plan to do. So we were notified we were eligible by the county's acceptance of designating me the agent. It is the formal process to apply for the funding. So this is a roundabout way for us to apply that we will accept the $75,000. Following your acceptance, I will return to council with either an RFP or a bid or where you'll actually decide the contractor to do the work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Boyce on agenda item number 32? Agenda item number 33 calls for the approval of the assumption of responsibility agreement between Delaware and Radnor Township with regard to a Ford F-250 four-by-four crew cab pickup truck emergency services unit. And we have Mr. Boyce to present this as well.
Chairman, this agenda item, the next one. Delaware County has established emergency services units. Great partnerships between our local police departments, the Police Chiefs Association and the sectors, the different regions in the county. These vehicles are the all-hazard response unit. It's a means where our program is to diversify what is kept here at the 911 center and put better resources into the field. Council approved these purchases of the vehicles. Radnor Township in Fallcroft Borough, both will, by acceptance of this. They may, we maintain the vehicle. The county can use it at any time. It remains an asset for the county, so anytime we need it, we can get it. But the police departments locally will maintain the oil changes, the tires and the gas. And then we will outfit you with equipment. So this is just a formal agreement to take the assets onto their roles at their local municipalities.
Thank you. Do, do we have any means of tracking sort of how they're using it to make sure, you know, things are being used in a manner that's consistent with your expectations?
Just through assignments, they're not designed for patrol in a traditional sense, but as the Police Chiefs Association over the last year really has stepped up and new leaders have emerged. What we're looking for these is, these units would be dispatched to a countywide disaster. Obviously, we had a number of events over the summer where we needed to deploy resources. They'd primarily be responsible for those. These belong with active shooter equipment and the like. They're also getting hazmat equipment identification, COVID response equipment and flooding equipment. So I'm looking to get an operational policy with our chiefs of police on their deployment. But they will be responding largely to significant events across the county. They're, again, not designated for patrol use.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, moving on to agenda item number 34, sort of the same, same motion, except this is with regard to Fallcroft rather than Radnor. Any, anything additional to add to this one, other than that what you've already?
No, sir. The only other comment to this is we're very fortunate to have another Providence Township involved in this program. Lower, Chester Township, Radnor and Fallcroft. We're looking forward to engaging our upper RV, Chester City, and then down along the McDavid Boulevard corridor. It's really been a great program for us. They provide excellent staffing 24/7. As you know, our police officers have been everywhere and they're willing to take on that all hazard. Flooding is a significant problem in Delaware County and these assets will be put to use. So I appreciate the police department stepping up.
All right, thank you, sir. Any, anything further from, from council from Mr. Boyce before we set him free? All right, thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thanks, sir.
Agenda item number 35 calls for the approval of the Central Tax Collection Department's request for refunds. Mr. Martin, anything of note here?
Uh, no, tomorrow evening I'll be asking for approval. It's 11 accounts totaling $4,100. One for 2019 in the amount of $1,300 and change. And 10 accounts for 2020 totaling close to $2,800.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, moving on to agenda item number 36, it calls for the approval to appoint Deborah Ciamaca to the redevelopment authority due to her resignation to a term ending October 2021. Any questions or comments or does anybody wish to present this today? All right, moving on to agenda item number 37, it calls for the request by the Controller's Office for the payment of current bills. Any questions or comments from council? Agenda item number 38, we'll call for communications from the executive director, Mr. Lazarus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be providing to council a public agreement with total construction that is a cleanup matter from the election. This is an emergency procurement and I have an obligation to inform council of that. A couple of things that aren't for tomorrow, but will occur today, though, just want to highlight to council. Just a reminder, we have a member in service today at 5:15 on the steps of the courthouse for those who fell victim to the COVID pandemic. I also want to update council just briefly. There are no additional intelligence reports that would indicate there's any increase or credible threats towards the county as it relates to tomorrow, to tomorrow's inauguration. I sent a notice out to staff in general reminding them that we're all obligated that if we see something, we should say something. But there's no reason at this time to think about curtailing our activities for tomorrow. And then I will also, we do have Secretary Wessel from the State Department of Corrections visiting us today out at GW Bell facility. Just wanted to make counsel aware that we have a high-placed state official visiting one of our facilities as well. And then tomorrow I will also, as part of our COVID discussions, we will with great enthusiasm remind everyone that the week after next, we will be opening the County Wellness Center in Yaden, which came out as a first-class facility to serve the residents of the county. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lazarus. Any questions for Mr. Lazarus? All right, moving on to agenda item number 39, this calls for a solicitor's report. Anything for us this week, Mr. Martin?
Tomorrow, tomorrow night I'll be talking about two litigation-related matters. Right now, I want to cover one thing quickly. Sort of this is in the way of information for council and transparency for the county, but I figure that we're two hours and 10 minutes in right now and I guess by the time we get to the solicitor's report tomorrow night, we'll be further than two hours and 10 minutes in. So maybe this is a better, better way to use the time. To let you know, we have been contacted by the Sheriff's Department regarding their challenges associated with handling permit applications for handguns. And, and the challenge has been that both because of COVID and because of staffing issues, they have fallen profoundly behind schedule in responding to citizens' applications. This is not uncommon, this is not uncommon in the Commonwealth and it has resulted in other areas in the Commonwealth of litigation being brought where citizens assert Second Amendment rights, that their Second Amendment rights have been impinged upon because of slow processing. Given capitalism, there's always a good response to such a circumstance. And there is a company, a private company, which assists counties in processing these applications. And this is a processing function as opposed to an approval function. And the company, Permittium, services many of the surrounding counties. And they take in-house and, and make, make virtual this paper process. And they do not charge the county, rather they charge the applicant an incremental $5 fee. So an applicant who would be following this process through the county paper process would be paying a $20 fee. An applicant who goes through the virtual process would be paying a $25 fee. The paper processing option will remain open. This will be a one-year agreement, which can be terminable by the county, whether or without cause. Because it doesn't require the county to spend any money, I, I don't think it's a matter which requires the approval of council. But the agreement will be presented to the chair for signature. And I thought because of the unusual area having to do with gun permitting, it was appropriate to advise the, the members of council publicly that this is a step that the county is taking.
Mr. Martin, I guess my head immediately goes to just from the perspective of safety. And if there's any, you know, support positively or negatively about whether this sort of virtual process has created any issues in terms of identifying, you know, things where, or not identifying risky permits, for lack of a better way of saying it.
The approval process, the, the process for making sure that folks are not on any of the lists that would otherwise prevent them from receiving the permits, that process continues unchanged. So it's really just a process of processing approved individuals and issuing permits, which is being expedited. Now, yes, if it is, if it is an effective program, there presumably will be more such legal permits in the hands of the county citizens. But that really is a policy and Second Amendment question, I mean, it's a Second Amendment question beyond the purview of this council as to whether that's a good idea or not. And the current situation leaves the county at risk of litigation, which we will not be able to defend because there is precedent that when the periods of time become onerous, and I'd rather not get into too many of the specifics, but the delays at this point are not measured in the weeks, they're measured in the months. And we want to make sure that they would not be measured in the next measurement of time. I mean, the people are waiting a very long time. Other counties have been sued. We're, we are at risk of getting sued. But it does not outsource the, the process to make sure people by law could not be prohibited from receiving the permit.
Okay, that, that's helpful. I, having never myself applied for a gun permit, I, I'm just not familiar with the process. And so if what I'm hearing you saying is this is truly ministerial, it's a paperwork element. It's not, there's not some sort of subjectivity that we would be outsourcing, then I, I get it.
Have any of those Second Amendment challenges had any success?
Uh, well, what happens is that eventually the counties cave because if somebody, if somebody's following the processes to get a gun and makes application, a year later they can't have their gun because of delayed paperwork. You know, the Second Amendment lawyers argue that it serves as de facto regulation by the county of gun possession, which is otherwise not permitted under state law.
And are we aware of what our backlog is and what the delay is? I mean, we don't have to go through.
It's north of six months and increasing quickly.
And I, I would point out that these are people who are going through the process to acquire a gun legally. And while people might have different views on whether and what kind of guns should be in the hands of private individuals, you know, the counties are charged with a ministerial function here of, and, you know, going through and checking their records and, and issuing permits. And I think. And I think we have to discharge our legal responsibility to do that, and, you know, while certainly bad things can happen as a result of legal gun ownership, I think where we ought to be properly focusing a lot of our attention is on how do we manage illegal gun ownership, and we don't want to be running into unnecessary issues with legal gun owners. So I'd rather not be dealing with litigation with the people who are trying to comply.
I did, I did receive a complaint from a constituent several months ago, and reached out to Sheriff Sanders to inquire as to what was happening here. At that time, he did explain to me that he was going through this process of seeing if there was an outside vendor that many others had been using to sort of help to address this backlog and enable him to do that, which he understands that he is required to do. So I just wanted to give folks that background. This has been in the works for quite some time, and something that Sheriff Sanders has been looking to as a solution for an ongoing problem.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions or comments for Mr. Martin? All right, the next item on the agenda calls for a public comment. I will look to Ms. Ruthur, or if Ms. Schaefer wants to continue her coup efforts in the public comment realm, but I'm not sure where that stands. Ms. Ruthur, do we have any public comments to read into the record?
Yeah, we do. We have three public comments, the first of which came in on January 7th, so after our last meeting, it, and I apologize, this gentleman does not have an address, although it was a nice comment, but we can't, keeping with our policy, we have another one, also no address, so I'm hoping that they've got their auto email and may choose to read it. Hang on just a second. The third one also is a very extensive comment, but does not include a street address.
Christine, when we get those, do we respond and just say, you know, we couldn't?
There is an auto, there is an auto response that says to the individuals, you know, note that we can't, I mean, it goes out to everybody who sends a response, please check your email to make sure you included a street address, so that we can read it.
Okay.
So with that, I have no comments that meet our requirement of submitting an address, which is what we do require when people are present at in-person meetings.
And I just want to note, all of these have the town they live in, so these submissions might be given, thinking they're adhering, by giving the town they live in, but just to clarify, we need a street address, not just the town you live in.
I will, I can, you know, certainly personally undertake to email these individuals and say, if you want to, please, you know, want it read, please include a street address, and I will confirm with our Public Relations Department, who sets up the auto reply, that it specifies it must be a street address.
That'd be helpful. Thank you, Ms. Ruthur. All right, the next item, Agenda, Agenda Item calls for council comments. Any council member who wishes to offer some comments today?
I would just, Mr. Lazarus alluded to it, but I would just remind people that the county is hosting a COVID memorial this evening at 5:15 with a moment of silence at 5:30. We are asking our, you know, communities, our municipalities, our faith communities, and individual residents to participate virtually by lighting the exterior of your buildings, by placing a candle in your window, if your building has bells, to ring those bells. It is in honor of, I think we were up to, as of yesterday, 1,053 deaths in Delaware County. We are approaching, or have already exceeded, 400,000 deaths nationwide. That number is going to increase substantially before a sufficient number of people are vaccinated in this country to provide herd immunity. So I think it is important, even if we can't gather in person, as I know Mr. Madden has, has, you know, encouraged us to do when we can at Rose Tree Park, to acknowledge these losses, that we take a moment to acknowledge them virtually this evening. I'd like to thank Ms. Morofsky and our Public Relations Group for their help in putting together tonight's acknowledgement. And I would also just ask people to, you know, please celebrate at home and not here at the courthouse with us. We will be streaming it live on our council webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ruthur. Anything else? Or nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're adjourned. Thank you.